Kathleen, about a roll call.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Quigley.
Here.
Okay, we have the minutes for the October 7th meeting. If everyone has had a chance to take a look at those, if we can get a motion or not.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2015, meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions.
Yeah.
You want to do an abstention, Roger?
Yes.
Okay, and an abstention. Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. This is for items not already on the agenda. Does anyone care to make any statements about anything in the universe that we deal with? No? All right, then we move on. Public hearing, the next item, item number one, Party Diagnostics Plan Development Permit at 1320 West McCoy Lane. Can we hear from staff?
Good evening, Chair Dickerson, fellow commissioners. Here we have a plan development permit application for Jay Hardy for a 20,000 square foot addition to an existing 9,600 square foot industrial building. It is located at 1320 West McCoy Lane in a PDM1, so that's Plan Development Light Manufacturing zoning district. The applicant would like to add additional warehouse space to expand his business that is already located on the parcel to the west. The site plan layout features ample landscaping in the front, which has already been planted. The plant palette and the design are modeled after the Moxie Cafe that are across the street. The addition also adds a loading dock for trucks and driveway access to the western parcel. The architecture of the addition has been designed to match the building. Staff's recommendation is that we recommend approval for this application because it fits with the surrounding uses and it complements the applicant's existing business on adjacent parcels. This concludes staff presentation. We're available for any questions and also the architect is present.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? No? All right, then why don't we have the applicant come up and tell us a little about it? If you can state your name and address for the.
Tom Martinez, 2624, Air Park Drive, architect for the project. We have no comments regarding the conditions. We agree with everything. It's a pretty straightforward project. We did want to take the opportunity to thank staff for having worked with us up to this point because Mr. Hardy, when he purchased the property, was concerned about its visual condition because it was right across the street from Moxie and realizing that we were processing the PD. Staff worked with us very closely to allow us to get a color scheme approved and a landscaping plan approved so that we could do all of that work, and it's been completed. And again, it was a nice visual for the Moxie clients and for the area, again, prior to, you know, getting the PD approval. So we just wanted to thank staff and Public Works was also involved in that. We did some underground work because we didn't want to disturb the landscaping after the fact. So we just had real good cooperation with the departments to get to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. We do have one public comment. I don't think we have any written communications on item number one. So, Mr. Cross.
Thank you, Dave Cross, Putter Cross and Associates, and I want to congratulate Jay Hardy and Hardy Diagnostics for being so successful to be able to expand and the city as well because it's a city that's going to benefit from these additional jobs and long-term benefit and payroll and everything else. All the years at the Chamber, Hardy Diagnostics has always been there supporting manufacturing and industry in the Chamber and the community. There is one thing that I noticed in here that I think hopefully will be looked at, and that is the traffic mitigation fee. You know, it's way too high. $72,000 is a lot for this when there's little or no traffic impact and the long-term benefit for the city of Santa Maria. Now, I know the planning commission can't change that, but I do know that the applicant, Party Diagnostics, can appeal it and the city council does have some flexibility to take a look at that. So I hope they do that. Other than that, I think it's a great project and urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cross. Seeing no more public comment, we'll bring it back. Does the applicant have anything else to say about that? No? Okay. Then we'll bring it back to the.
Actually, I do.
Okay.
I would just like the commission to know that we have had discussions with Public Works regarding those fees, and they were actually being adjusted because it is primarily warehouse space. Though there is a significant reduction that has already been discussed, so that's why we really didn't feel we needed to bring that up.
Okay, and so, and you're satisfied with the, whatever the median, the.
Yes.
Middle road is that you guys chose on.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, bring it back to the commission. Any questions or comments? Okay, we need a motion.
I move that we approve Plan Development Permit, ED 2015-0009, Hardy Diagnostic Edition at 1320 West McCoy Lane.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries, and good luck to Mr. Hardy and his group. Thank you very much. Item number two, Amendment to the Downtown Specific Plan. May we hear from staff?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Well, it's been quite a road to get to this point. It was about a year ago now that City Council directed staff to take a look at the amendments to the downtown specific plan. This was originally brought to you in April for approval, and then staff was directed to do some community outreach. So here we are again. I'm going to go over briefly what the amendments to the plan consisted of and the new strategies that are being implemented with this for the downtown revitalization, and then a little bit of what was actually amended in the document and some of the community outreach that we This plan, the amendment to it, is meant to be more of a roadmap to where we need to go to see the downtown revitalization. Some of the criticism that was expressed about the old plan was that it was too stringent, it was too cumbersome, it was too big, it was too specific, and it was hard for the flexibility of reuse of projects and moving forward to give the flexibility in what to do. And so, we made it a more flexible document and made this more of a roadmap. So there are guidelines and steps that should be taken to see some of the processes and implementation that the plan does state in here happen, but there isn't necessarily very specific things and timelines associated with them so that this would be more of a living document. Staff views that, you know, making it more of a living document and not just a rigid set in stone document will allow the decision makers and changing conditions to be able to adapt to what this plan is doing. The strategies that were implemented that we did take a look at and have been expressing to the public and through all of the hearings that we've had, or have been having, is a three-prong approach for the downtown. Again, we took a look at what main ingredients every downtown needs and has to make it a vibrant place, and we boiled it down to three elements that we then translated into these three approaches. And the approaches are activities, and how we are going to meet that is by Friday night events, and this is what we're doing in the immediate future. Partnerships, really partnering with businesses in the community and property owners in the downtown, and we, the mechanism we're using to do that is the downtown permit and to really beautify the downtown through partnerships with businesses and improving their private sites, but in the public realm in creating a streetscape plan. In the topic of activities and downtown events, we really need to make downtown the primary area where activities happen in the city of Santa Maria. We're looking at this spring to immediately launch a downtown event, and that event will look like something, like a Friday night event that has food trucks, bands for the concert element, bounce houses, food. The farmer's market that currently runs on Wednesday afternoons has agreed to move to Friday night and join that event. Also, there is a group of vendors that go out for the first Friday at Hancock College, and they've agreed to join this Friday night event. So staff has been working very closely in getting this started, and this should launch in spring, more specifically in March. So more to come on that Friday night event. Along the lines of partnerships, the mechanism that was new and added to the downtown plan was the downtown permit. And this permit is something that is going to be required for all projects that happen in the downtown, and projects are determined to be events or reuse of buildings or new construction that happens downtown. Yes, everything requires a permit, but this is going to be the mechanism that we use to really develop those partnerships, to really get the businesses and the tenants and the property owners to come in and talk to staff and the way that we're going to offer incentives and build that relationship within the downtown. We really want to change the perception of the city and the perception of the Community Development Department and not just be this thing that you come to to go through a gauntlet of procedures and processes and go here to get your business license, go there to get fire approval, go there to get a Health Department permit, but really that planning would be a one-stop shop and that they would feel comfortable coming into the planning department, having a planner assigned to them that would be a concierge, a liaison that would be working with them. So the idea of starting a small business downtown wouldn't be so intimidating, but that they would feel like they have somebody in the city that would be a partner within, with them to make that happen. So this permit was specifically created to do that. Along with that partnership that we develop with them when they come in to get the permit, we're going to offer them incentives. A business that desires to improve their exterior facade, add awnings, fix up their storefronts, paint their building, make site improvements, that we would offer them a range of incentives that they could apply for to do that, including facade improvement money, waiving of downtown permit fees, a building permit fees, deferring of impact fees, anything that we can at this point offer to them to make that process easier and to make it more affordable, we are going to do at this time. And then hopefully through that, we'll see the incremental improvement of the downtown appearance. As part of the beautification also, we are applying for a streetscape grant to do this plan. Right now, we are, the city's applying for a grant through Caltrans. It's called a transportation planning grant, and Caltrans would be partnering with the city in doing a downtown streetscape plan, and that plan would look at beautifying the major corridors and some of the other roadways in the downtown, adding bike lanes, traffic calming, public arts, street trees, winding of sidewalks, you name it, any way to make the downtown an easier experience for the pedestrian and the bikes and a more walkable inviting area. So that application is in works right now. We're going to apply by the end of the month. Should the city receive the grant, we'd get a notification in April and we'd start the process in summer. With all these strategies and the amendments, we went out and had a community meeting after planning commission's direction to do so. We held a community meeting on July 22nd and then also a joint meeting with commission and council in August 18th. We also had numerous targeted meetings with interest groups, property owners, stakeholders, you name it. We tried to talk to everyone in really presenting the strategies and what we're doing in amending the downtown. And for the most part, the feedback has been very positive. There's been a lot of excitement about what the city is pursuing and doing in the downtown, on board with the flexible regulations and guidelines and process that the new plan has to offer. And there's been a lot of excitement with even projects that are wanting to happen in downtown with what the downtown permit is going to offer them in terms of incentive and process. Just as an overview of what the actual amendments to the plan look like, the things that were kept from the original plan were the downtown vision, the district visions, design guidelines, the relaxed standards that the downtown has with the increase in heights and reduction of parking incentives and such, and then the need for the streetscape improvements. What did change was we made the document much shorter, so it's only about 100 pages now versus 250. There's flexibility in design, there's flexibility in process and reuse of existing sites. There is a legal nonconforming section added to it to make that the most flexible in the city. What's changed since our last meeting, or the joint meeting in August with the council is we revised some of the language, we clarified the plan strategy, we cleaned up some of the language about the downtown permits to make sure that was really clear of what staff's intent and intention was for the downtown permit, that it would be a concierge-type service and a liaison. And we added some wording on the prohibited uses and landscape requirements. We've already been implementing some of this, especially the strategies with the downtown permit. We have had several projects that have wanted to start up in the downtown that we've been doing a trial run with the concierge-type service. Ed Carcari, who is going to be partnering with the city and doing the downtown event, we've already been working with them and making, planning the one-stop-shop for him and doing all the background work, testing out how that works in our communication with other departments. The Old Ambrosia Restaurant is looking at changing to a Mediterranean restaurant. They want to come and add some square footage and redo the whole building and really have offered them the concierge-type service and the incentives and benefits of the downtown permit, which they were really excited about and are waiting for that to go into effect so that they can take advantage of that. So we are seeing the success of some of the things that we're proposing to implement already, and staff is really encouraged by that. That concludes my presentation. I wanted to point out a couple, a couple of things. You do have a letter from UPC on their comments about the plan that is in front of you that they have submitted on their remarks and comments. Also, there is another sheet about added verbiage to the legal nonconforming section of the plan. There was one additional sentence added to the plan since you last saw it at the joint meeting, and that was the last sentence, which is, "Once a legal nonconforming use is replaced by a permitted use, then the legal nonconforming use shall cease and cannot be reestablished." We just wanted to make sure that that was clear because the nonconforming section now allows for a use, no matter how long it's not been in effect. Say, an auto repair store moves out, and three years later, another auto repair store moves in, they can, which is different than anywhere in the city. However, if that auto repair store moves out and a retail store moves in, then auto-related uses aren't allowed on that site any longer. So just wanted to clarify that. I'm available for any questions that you may have, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Nana. Is there any questions by the commissioners to staff regarding the plan, the new plan?
What's the status of the sale of the wall here? Is any progress being made on that?
I am unaware of if there are any offers or what's going on with that. I do know it's up for sale. I don't know if anybody has offered.
Mr. Andrade?
Just a couple of questions. Has staff had the opportunity to review the Urban Planning Concepts letter that was sent? Looks like it was dated the 19th. Have you had an opportunity to look through the suggested modifications and changes and the like?
We have looked through them. Staff did meet with UPC back in June. We met with them, and some of those, a majority of those comments were still the same, were the comments that were originally received, that we sat down face-to-face with UPC and talked through them and why staff had included some of them and why they hadn't included others, and most of those points, we have already expressed staff's position on and taken a look at, so.
So staff's position is, in a nutshell?
In a nutshell, we have agreed to disagree on a majority of those comments and gave our reasoning behind it. We appreciate UPC looking over the document and reading it. They had some great insight for us back in June about things we needed to add to the plan and clarifying some of the language, which we did. Some of the other comments, however, staff expressed that, though appreciated, we agreed to disagree on them.
Okay, thank you. Nanda? Thank you very much, Nana. I appreciate it. Written communications, public comments, obviously we've received the written communication from UPC, so we have that. So we'll go on, we do have some speaker slips. We have a number of them, so let us limit them to three minutes each, and we'll start off with Mike Perry, and after Mr. Perry will be Lori Tamora. And Mr. Perry, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, thank you. Michael Perry, my address is I-32 Capistrano in Santa Maria, and I'm with GA Hancock Properties, Inc., here in Santa Maria. And Hancock Properties has about a dozen small to medium-sized rental spaces in the downtown area that would be affected by this plan, and obviously, part of my job is to keep those spaces occupied. So this would have a direct impact on me and the company. And although I don't in general oppose the plan, there are three areas that I'm concerned about, and I'll address those quickly. I guess my primary area of concern is with the downtown specific plan for permit requirement or the reuse of existing spaces. As I understand it, excuse me, the plan will require any new tenant coming into one of our spaces, even if it's a similar use that's permitted under the plan, it'll be required to get a DTSP permit before, before moving in, and that concerns me because it could cause delays, cost money, and just be another obstacle to keeping the spaces occupied. And I think the last thing any of us want is increased vacancies in the downtown area. So I don't think an obstacle like that is a good idea for small businesses, reoccupying a space in a similar use that's clearly permitted under the plan. I already send prospective tenants down to the planning department to have a brief over-the-counter chat and get staff's nod as to whether or not their use is going to be approved, and that seems like that should be adequate, that simple, quick process, as opposed to a permit. I just don't think it's applicable. If it is going to be required, it needs to be free, quick, and efficient. And also, on the downtown permit requirement, I understand it'll be required on small building projects in addition to the building permit, something as simple as restriping a parking lot for ADA requirements, you know, a job that might cost a few hundred dollars. I understand the DTSP permit requirement would apply in addition to the building permit requirement, and again, that seems like an unnecessary burden for people doing business in the downtown area, and it seems like there should be a threshold established where small projects aren't subject to that requirement. And third, I've read Lori Tamora's comments. I know a lot of them are still outstanding. I've heard what staff has to say about it, but it still seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions and things still have to be resolved. So with that in mind, it seems maybe premature for you to recommend the council adopt this plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Tamora, followed by Mr. Sundaram.
Good evening, Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts, and I'm here today in ambivalence because I want to support this plan. I think staff has done a good job in refining it, but I do believe they've missed the mark on a couple of points. At the joint meeting with the city council, there was a review of the plan for the downtown area by the Town Center Mall, and I'm sorry, I don't have a clicker, so.
[inaudible].
Okay, go ahead. And this is the illustration of what currently is being proposed in the area, and none of these illustrations were added to the specific plan as directed by the city council in the planning.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but in it was a presentation, it was part of your three minutes then.
Correct.
So you're giving.
I just want to remind you that this was not.
The city council didn't do it, but you did it, is that right? And then now you're doing it again?
And the reason.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to remind you, it was a great presentation. So you can flip through the pictures. These were all ideas. This is, the verbs, the words in the document say this, but there is not one picture in the document that illustrates the opportunities in the Town Center West project. Even the cover page of this document, it reflects something that's completely contrary to the text of the document. So my recommendation is remove most of the sketches that are in there and put some of these illustrations in here because that's the vision that's written in this document. And, you know, you need to be consistent with your plans, not have one thing say one thing and then a picture shows something different. You know, bottom line is, I do have a lot of concerns. I had concerns originally when this was written, and now I still have concerns, and it's all about process and perception. I believe that staff truly believes that this will be concierge service, that there will be ways to move forward with this project in expedited manner, but at the same time, I'm very concerned. I truly believe that we've moved from a ministerial process where it was an over-the-counter permit to do a change of use from a candle store to a bookstore, has now put all of the permits, any change of use is discretionary now. It's discretionary at the staff level for the zoning administrator, it's discretionary at the planning commission, and appealable to the city council. So you've now added, instead of a couple of days' work at the counter and then moving on to the building department, you've now added probably, I'm going to guess, because I'm a planner and I do worst-case analysis, 30 to 50 days of analysis because you have to notice, if you do zoning administrator, you have to notice the public. If it's going to then be appealed to the planning commission, you've added another two months. If you appeal to the city council, you've added two more months. So you have a six-month process of this, and some of these are not even appealable. Some of these go directly to the city council because of where they're located. So my recommendation is do three things. First thing, take all of the reuse permits out of the plan. Anybody that's going into an existing building should not be subjected to this process. Secondly, remove everything that's identified in the Town Center Mall and Town Center West out of the plan. Why would any change of use in the Town Center Mall be required to go to the planning commission for approval? It's an interior building. What can they do on the outside if Subway turns into the Orange Julius shop? I mean, those are changes of use. That's what the plan says. And then, thirdly, I would put a two-year limit on this plan. Let's test it. If you're going to adopt it the way it's written, it needs to be reviewed and reviewed quickly. So I know my time's up, and I really did hope that staff would respond more positively to my suggestions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But to be fair, you gave us this thing on the 19th, right? I mean, so.
The point of the letter is, the stuff that's in shaded gray, this letter was provided in June, exactly the way it's written. What's shaded in gray are the changes staff made. What's shaded in yellow are the changes that they did not do. What's in green are the ones that are really, really important, that's, the color-coded ones, the yellows and greens did not get changed. Just the gray shaded areas are the ones that got changed. This letter has been in staff's hands now for almost five months.
Well, I've seen a version of this, but the last one we've got, the one we have here, is dated the 19th, and so.
I got the specific plan on the 14th. That's when I got, it was sent to me on a Saturday. I was gone for three days to the APA convention.
I'm just, I'm just, I understand, we're all pressed for time, and so to go through each and every one of your suggested comments or changes, I think is, is. each and every one of your suggested comments or changes, I think, is a tremendous piece of work.
It could have been done four months ago. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, great.
May I just ask, what does staff have to say about the interior of the mall portion of Mr. Tamora's comments?
So in the, stepping back, the whole premise of the partnerships is that there needs to be a relationship between the businesses and the city, and there isn't one now. So the, there actually is a requirement for every new business to get a permit. It's just a very fast permit, so most people don't even realize they're getting it. The goal is for many of these things to keep on doing that. For the mall itself, we've talked to the manager, there are, we asked if there was the desire to have incentives for any of the tenants that are coming into the mall. Those incentives could be that their plan check fees can be, you know, reduced or waived, that impact fees could be, you know, adjusted and such. Turns out, the mall owner, the mall operator did not believe that those would be of any interest. So what would be done for the mall is effectively an umbrella downtown permit would be proposed that would say any subsequent re-tenanting or such can be done administratively instead of, or if there's no interest in keeping track of who's going into the mall, not even having those have a permit. And there is that option as an incentive, a faster process in the updated plan. So we have a strategy and a mechanism that we have talked to the mall about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sundaram, followed up by Glenn Morris.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sambaya Sundaram. I'm an owner of a biotech company in this city.
And if you could state your address just for the record, please.
It's 910 Northeast Avenue, Santa Maria, California, 93454.
Excellent.
Thank you.
The most succinct we've ever heard.
Thank you. You know, I have actually two things I wanted to talk about today. One would be more like a question, another would be a comment about what's going on today. I would start with a question. My question would be, when the planning commission hears any application that comes forth to them, and then a permit is issued, is that permit enforceable? I've heard few permit holders claiming there is no law that allows that act to be enforceable. Secondly, claiming it is only a permission. So that's my question that I'd like to be answered, maybe later. The second issue was what was being discussed regarding, you know, when a business comes into an existing business, having to go through this entire process of a new permit. I would, based on what has occurred in my case, I would 100% agree that is necessary. Because whenever a new person comes into an existing business place, they might go ahead and also do certain construction activities without taking into context what they could be harming, damaging underground utilities, as well as affecting neighbors, all of which, if it was under one control in the city, what occurred to me would never have occurred. And my damages is enormous. So I would say, if the city had a process in which one person overshot everything, things could not have slipped through. That, these are the two issues I thought I'd probably discuss. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Maybe we can have legal talk about his discussions now?
I'd be happy to answer any of the questions Mr. Sundaram has after this meeting or during normal business hours.
Okay. Let's see.
Let me follow. Can I just, I guess the question I understood distilled from what he was asking was whether or not, under the downtown specific plan, once a permit has been issued, that whether, how is the city able to enforce that, that they're following the conditions? Is that going to be any different from what we do now?
Chair Dickerson, Commissioner Andrade, I'm not sure that was what he was, I mean.
Well, if not, that's my question.
Okay, well, what is your question? Would you stay?
Well, how would you enforce the conditions that are in this permit process? How would the city enforce that, say, somebody decides to not to paint something a certain color even though they would agree to that?
Well, assuming that it's the same kind of permit that, you know, we use, building permits, I mean, conditionally used permits, planned development permits, there is a number of different ways to go about enforcing the conditions of the permit, from compliance orders to administrative citations, to hearings before the zoning administrator. It would depend on what the condition is, and, I mean, there are ways.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris, followed by, looks like Mr. Bierman?
Good evening, members of the planning commission and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. Glenn Morris, 614 South Broadway. Couple of points that I wanted to touch on. I think there are some elements of this plan that we find very attractive. I think the emphasis on trying to create some events in the downtown and bring people into the community is a good start. As some of you may be aware, the chamber, through our visitors and convention bureau, has an incentive fund that we use to support organizations that are planning large events that have the potential for drawing outside of the community attendees. And we are, we are looking at some options for adding some incentives into that process, should they choose to do the event in the downtown as opposed to someplace else in the community. So we think there's ways we can partner to add a little bit of weight to that process, and we'll continue to look at that and connect with staff on that. I think some of the incentive components are a good start as well. I don't know that, you know, financially, they're probably not going to be that tipping point for a developer, but they at least send a message that there's a willingness and an interest on the part of the community to talk about ways to bring people into the community. And one of the specific, a couple of specific pieces that I am particularly encouraged by, the city leading out on the streetscape piece and trying to get out in front of that, find the funding, to put projects in as the city, rather than just trying to incentivize private folks to do it, is the right way to start. I think we've got to demonstrate leadership there and build a palette that other people are going to then want to match. And I think, short of getting some of that done, I'm not sure anybody's ever going to put private dollars into improving the streetscape, or even their façades if the rest of the plan's not in place. So that's, I think, a piece where it's good. The legal non-conforming piece removes a lot of stress, and so that's a good piece. You know, I do have some concerns about this, you know, the number of permits, this everything that's out there. But I understand the motivation behind it. I'm concerned from a resource and a financial impact kind of a piece on staff, that that's really manageable if we're successful in generating projects. So again, I think that piece needs to be looked at. You've heard others talk about that in particular. You know, I think we've heard staff on a number of occasions refer to this as a living document, and as a framework that will be, where the colors will be added as we go. And I think if that's truly the process, and this plan really has that ability, you know, to take something like the mall and put a final, you know, description in that really clearly defines it at a later stage, then you're probably okay moving forward to get them go, and to give them the permission to put that, you know, let's get the 30,000-foot piece in place, let's move to the 10,000-foot, you know, piece, and then we can work on the details as we go. So if that's really the process, and your commission and the council are committed to, you know, continual refinement, without having to go back through a whole entire, you know, many-year process of doing specific plans, then I think we can work with it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bierman, followed by, looks like Mr. Karkari.
How you doing?
Good.
Yes, I'm Isaac Bierman from the Latino Business Community Council. My office is 829 Jennifer Court, San Diego, California. Congratulations for moving forward with this plan. It really is needed for, I would say for better, for worse, but for better. All I can tell you is I come from a big city, San Jose, and every time that somebody talks about business in a big city, somehow, somewhere, they bypass Santa Maria for some reason. So we needed to identify our town. If you go to Solvain, you identify Solvain. If you go to San Luis Obispo, you identify, you go to Santa Barbara. And for some reason, Santa Maria is not even in the map if somebody talks about business. So all I can tell you is, we had to make it attractable, attractive to people, and I'm pretty sure it will. And also take bites from different ethics, I mean Latinos, of course, a few percent are Latinos. And that way, we can, as a city, I think it's time to move forward, well, not too many enforcers, whoever they are, just make it smooth, make it nice. And I can guarantee you, business will come, and we'll, I mean, it's a small business, and other small businesses in the community, we appreciate it, but you have to listen more to them, I think. You have to have more connection, more interaction with them. You're missing something, somewhere with the community. We had to get it together and forget about enforcing things and trying to reach out to them, and trying to figure out what the problem is, and get it together. And once we do that, I can guarantee you, we're going to be successful in Santa Maria, and hopefully, we'll put them in the map for future business, because we do need them. And this is San Luis Town. I've been here 40 years. I've got a few businesses and support my family. So thank you for that. So congratulations. I hope everything moves forward very nicely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ed Karkari, and then followed by Ann Cremerosa?
Good evening. Ed Karkari, Mega 97-1, 718 East Chapel. I want to talk about a very small piece of the plan, the events. Our group has been doing events in the city for the last 25 years. It's our heart, it's what we're really, really good at doing. And I got to tell you, I'm extremely excited that we have people like Peter and Ned that really want this to happen, and many other people in the city. I'm so tired of hearing people, not only in our city, but other cities, saying, "There's nothing to do in Santa Maria." We want to do something in Santa Maria. We want to put an event on every week that families can come to. It's safe and it's fun, and attract all the different demographics of our city by bringing Spanish and English bands downtown, and a lot of different food groups. As of right now, we have between 60 and 100 people, booths that are already going to start on the first Friday. Our goal is to get to 300 booths for the downtown. And I'd love to see it on Broadway and make it a real downtown event, something that we can thumb our nose at San Luis Obispo. And forgive me if any of you live in San Luis Obispo. But we want to do something, we want to do something really fun. I think it can really help the downtown. We have four medias, one TV station, a broadcast TV, and three radio stations, English and Spanish. We're going to commit to $100,000 the first year in media time, just to drive people to this downtown event. So I hope this goes through. Appreciate your time and your effort, Ned. Thank you, Guy.
Thank you very much. Ms. Karamosa?
Well, you got close. I'm Ann Cremerosa.
Thank you.
And thank you for giving me the time. 429 East Main Street. I am, I wear two hats. I'm the entrepreneurship instructor at Hancock College, and I'm the director for the first Friday project that was mentioned. And as in that, wearing that hat, I'm thrilled because the vendors who have been coming once a month to Hancock College will now be able to have a weekly event where they can actually spread their wings and really grow, be able to sell their crafts and wares in a much better environment, and help their little businesses actually flourish. So in that, I'm really excited about the events piece. But I'm really here as the founder of MIYB Spaces at 429 East Main, and it's a coworking, shared workspace. But really what we are is, we are a business support hub. And what we do is, we help small businesses get started. And from my personal experience and from past experience, when in the 90s, I was the property manager for Town Center West, and my tenants then went through the same thing that I went through when I opened my business, and dealing with trying to get a building permit in the city of Santa Maria that always said, "Oh, we're pro-business," was very painful. And I am really excited about the concierge system. I've been working closely with these two fabulous people, and I'm very excited about this concept. I'm going to work hand in hand with them. Matter of fact, I'd love to have a planner in my space, because people are coming to me all the time, "What's the first step for starting a business?" And so I'm hoping that at some point, we do have a planner at MIYB, so that we can really work together, or at least have some planner hours, so that we can help make this process even easier. So kudos to Peter Gilli and his staff. Kudos to the city for letting to step up and really be business-friendly. And, you know, I invested a lot of money in that business, and I cross the river every day. I'm not a resident of Santa Maria, but I really believe in Santa Maria, and I believe in the downtown of Santa Maria, and so I want to see it really shine. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think that was the last of our speakers. Staff, do you have any comments or any last things you would like to say before I close public hearing?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I think the main issue is a concern around the partnerships aspect. And I think that the idea of having a check-in, whether it's 18 months, two years, on how that process goes, is very, a very, an idea I strongly support. The, if people who have worked with the planning department in years past think that this process is just going to be like that was, then they should be, they would be, very fair for them to question what we're going to need a permit, how long is that going to take, how much is it going to cost. What we have put together in this plan was directly to address what the council wanted. They wanted downtown to look better, but they didn't want to impose it. So our view is, the only way to do that is through communication and sharing of information. If somebody comes into an existing building and it's reused, they will have to come in and talk to us. They will not be required to make any improvements to their building. They will only be told, "If you did choose to make improvements, you could get these incentives." They can then say, "No, thanks." Or they could just note it, "Well, I'm not ready to do anything now, but maybe in a couple of years I will be. I'm glad I know I can get incentives for it." So if there's a retail space, that goes away, a new retailer comes in, they come in, they talk to us, they won't be forced to do anything, except just maintain their property. If they want incentives, then we're going to ask them to do things to the exterior, awnings, paint, change out their signage. From what I've heard, the big concern is about those type of businesses and what they might go through. I can, I can say, the full intention is that they will not go through a hard process. They will go through more of an information-sharing process and a relationship, constructing a relationship-type approach. We also know that if we do not succeed at this, that we will be held accountable, and we will have to adjust things accordingly. We are willing to take on that, that risk, because the benefit of having more of the business owners in downtown, having a line of communication. business owners in downtown, having a line of communication with the city, knowing that they can come to somebody and get their issues addressed is worth it. Because that's going to make the events work better, that's going to make the streetscape plan end up working better, and that's going to make their businesses work better. If we, if the end result is what many of the longtime property owners and business owners are afraid of, if that ends up happening, then in two years, we should change it back. No question. But I am not worried about the resources and our ability to, to make this work on those type of cases. As for issues about what's in the UPC letter, that is 99% all information that we did get earlier and we had a meeting, we talked through them. A lot of them come from a perspective, one's a perspective of past operations. And I said the same thing, that if we fail, if, if the process ends up being a burden to people and not having any benefit, then we know we will be held accountable and we'll have to change that and such. We do agree to disagree with a lot of the points in the, in the UPC list, but a lot of things came out of our communication that we feel made the plan a lot stronger. So, whether the commission would like to put it into the plan itself or just make a separate motion that you recommend that the partnership aspect of the plan be reviewed in two years, I think either way, we would fully support that.
All right. Thank you very much. With no further public comment.
Do you have one more comment?
Sure, go ahead. Make it short.
Again, Mike Perry of Hancock Properties. I understand that one of the reasons for having a DTSP permit is to get new businesses to come in so that the city has an opportunity to offer them incentives. But I'd like to point out that, for example, if I send a new small retailer in for his DTSP permit, he's not the appropriate person to talk to about incentives. He doesn't own the property. I think the discussion about incentives needs to be addressed to the property owners and not some small business guy that's walking in your door to see if he can open a barber shop in my, in my building.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the, to the public hearing and the commission. I'd like to make just one statement beforehand, and that is that I just want to commend staff, Neta, Peter, and everyone behind you that we don't see at the moment, who has put this plan together. You guys have done a tremendous amount of work, you've done a lot of outreach, you've made some people happy and some people not so, but that's the, that's the nature of these projects. And thank you very much for all of your time and effort. What does, what does the commission have to say, Mr.?
Yeah. What, what kind of competition could we put in down here that would give competition to Costco? You know, that, that place is packed. And our parking lots sit in there vacant and so forth. We've got the room. We need to come up with something that can go in there that's going to bring people down to downtown to do their shopping.
If, if we had the ability to attract a more interesting type of Realtors, retailers, if, if there was some way we knew that we could just do it, we, we would have already done that. The approach in the plan is that we're going to focus on increasing, try to increase the foot traffic to the area in other ways, like with events, the special events, bring people down to downtown, do the streetscape plan to make the area, at least along the public streets, look a lot nicer and more welcoming. The hope is that will have some trickle-down effect on some of the businesses if we bring a lot of people down and they don't just show up at the theater and then leave or show up at the library and then leave. Because a lot of people come downtown, a lot of people go to the theater, a lot of people go to the library. There's some spots that are bringing a lot of people, but they don't seem to stay or walk around or do any of that. So, the hope is with activities and such, with incentives for people to upgrade their facades, that we can slowly improve the retail area. But the plan is not, is not trying to say that we are going to compete with the big boxes because that, we may not be able to in downtown. We're trying to make downtown into an activity area that events occur and maybe it ends up being more of a restaurant area or specialty stores, more of an experience than just going to the big boxes and, and getting a good deal on, on your purchases.
Anything else, Ms. Brown?
No, I can see, I can see what he's saying, but it's just, it doesn't help us a bit.
Ms. Andrade?
No, I don't have any comments.
I, I think I'm going to support the plan. I think the two-year review period is probably a good idea.
Ms. Hernandez?
I'm torn between the two-year period and whether that's too long for, to get businesses to tell us that the new process is not working. So I'd probably support more of a one, one and a half year waiting period because we, if we do wait until two years, that doesn't give the city, the staff enough time to react. So maybe at a year and a half, you know, we start doing the data gathering and then by two years, we know if it's working or not. So, that's me.
Mr. Quigley?
Yeah, well, I certainly agree about the two-year period and I also agree that we don't want to scrap this whole thing, but this letter from UPC concerned me. I'd sure like to know lots of questions about the questions and the answers before. And I don't, don't want to scrap the plan for, for sure, but I sure like to hear more about the answers to these questions that you've already mitigated with, I guess. But I'm, I'm for the plan to go.
I, I support the plan as well. I, frankly, I, I don't know that I would have put even the two-year extension in not, not less than two years. Certainly I would be less supportive of it. And my, my reasoning is that I think that sometimes there are, and I think that this is what's happened with the, the old downtown specific plan, is that you end up with a mounting pressure to change if they don't, if things are not happening fast enough. But this is not a fast process. This is a slow and steady process to build to a win at the end of the, the whole thing. And so for me, I'm not even sure that, that you would be able to see 100% success in two years, but you would be able to at least see the, see the, the overall pattern of things. So, I, I wouldn't support it, I wouldn't support an amendment to it of less than two years, but if it's the druthers of everybody else to go for two years, then, then I would, I would rather see the thing move forward with that two-year limitation than not move forward at all. So, that's, that's my two cents. We need a resolution or not?
Resolution 2667, that would be that. Ms. Hernandez?
That by resolution 2667, we recommend the city council approval of the downtown specific plan, SPZ 2014-0002, with the partnership aspect review after two years.
Would that also include the added verbiage?
With the added verbiage.
I'll second that.
All right. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye. It passes. Thank you, everybody, for all of your comments. They were all very much appreciated. And thank you once again, staff, for all that you put into it. Item number three, report on city council actions. Are there any reports on city council actions?
Yes. Last night, the council authorized an application, a grant application to Caltrans for the streetscape plan in downtown. So that's very promising. They're able to apply for it even though the new plan's not adopted because streetscape improvements were a topic of the old plan as well. So, as described, we will learn about that, learn about whether we, we get that grant in April, and if we do, do receive it, then we could start work in, in July next year. That is, whereas the, the, other than the process part of the downtown plan, the rest of the downtown plan's pretty high level and big picture, the streetscape plan's going to get into details where there's going to be lots of discussion about exactly what should happen on this sidewalk and this intersection and such. So we're anticipating a lot of community outreach, a lot of discussions at, at Planning Commission, lots of study sessions. So it's going to be very hands-on. Also, at council, the council approved the ordinance changes for the freeway tower signs that the Planning Commission recommended in mid-September. So, that went on a 5-0 vote. There was some discussion about maybe changing the boundary of that particular tower sign overlay on the north side of, of town, but in the end, they, the council accepted what was done. And the applicant was fine with it, so that, that clearly helped. Those were the two council items that relate to what the Planning Commission has been working on.
Thank you, Peter. Peter? Four, oral reports from planning commissioners and staff. Let's start off with staff.
Yes, thank you. The, the Enoz Rancho's project is, is moving forward. That is the 100 acres on the north side of Betaravia, so across from the freeway center and east of, of the cemetery and south of those small car dealerships on Battles. We are on the very tight-
How many acres is that?
About a little over 100. We are on a, we're trying to meet a tight schedule on behalf of, of the applicant and it would be a great benefit if we could have a special study session on November, November the 3rd, which is a Tuesday, from five, from 3:00 to 5:00, as opposed to the normal time on Thursday. The reason we're asking for the different time is because just taking the staff and the development team, we will not have room in the moonroom. So we want to have it in Shepherd Hall and that week, Shepherd Hall is only available 3:00 to 5:00.
And that would be in lieu of the normal study session?
In lieu of the, of the study session on the 5th. This would be a, a special, meaning more of a one-time occurrence. This, this would not be a pattern. All the regular study sessions would stay in the moonroom on the Thursdays.
Okay.
Are, is the commission available on that day?
I am.
I am too.
I don't know.
Which, which day again?
November 3rd, Tuesday.
Be a Tuesday at 3:00 o'clock.
Generally, I'm always the fellow one. Well, there's a couple days I'm not, but-
Sad statement, I'm sorry. It looks like most of us are, if not all of us. Does that seem okay to everyone?
Yeah. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. Do any of the planning commissioners have any reports that they wish to give orally? None? All right. In that case, this meeting is adjourned and we will see everybody back at the, looks like the November 3rd.
Say, say. Thank you.
Great. Good job.